Meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Music, will you please call the roll? Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Dad.
Here.
Ms. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch.
Here.
Ms. Sitch.
Here.
Nine members present. Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, the Board met an executive session to review and discuss matters related to school safety that if conducted in public would be reasonably likely to impair the effectiveness of the safety or security measure or jeopardize the safety and security of a resource infrastructure or information storage system. The Board also discussed information and strategy related to contractual or labor relation matters. Dr. Reljack, could you introduce our guest tonight?
Sure, it is my pleasure to introduce Fox Chapel area high school program principal, Dr. Nicole Smith, who is here to introduce a high school student who earned a prestigious national scholarship. And the other student who also won a national scholarship was unable to attend this evening, and we're so glad to be able to honor one. Dr. Smith.
Good evening, thank you all for having me. It is my great pleasure to introduce a young student who is the winner of the prestigious college scholarship. This scholarship provides a full ride presidential scholarship to any university or college that is accredited. It covers all of her tuition, room and board and expenses. There were 5,000 applicants across the country, this is one of five students to earn this award. And Yulani earned this award because she maintains exemplary academic performance. She exhibits an interest in public policy and she has an appreciation of the values of President College, that President College himself championed. Yulani is the Vice President and President-elect of the Technology Student Association, or TSA. She is the participates in the high school speech and debate club, Director of Speech, and Co-President of the Science Fair Club. She has an interest and conducts research in ophthalmologic microbiology at the UPMC Vision Institute under Dr. Robert Shanks. She has written multiple articles for numerous economic think tanks in public health and runs e-commerce, an e-commerce company that she has onboarded vendors from across the country and abroad. It is my pleasure to introduce the very prestigious Yulani Kubini. Well, Yana, congratulations on your scholarship, and it is my pleasure to present you with a certificate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The other student that we would like to recognize, although she couldn't make it, is Victoria Fendler. Victoria has been honored by the United Nations Association of the USA and Interview Technologies as part of the 2024-2025 National Community Service Awards. I will make sure that she gets her award in the office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are so proud of both of you, and congratulations for not only earning such a wonderful and prestigious scholarship, but for your work, we're glad to have you as our student. That concludes our guests today.
All right, thank you, and congratulations. We're all very proud of you and know you're going to do great things in the future. I can't wait to hear what your future plans will be. And next up, we have our Fox Leadership Council student reps. We have Michael D. Domenico, Ross Kalyg, and Dylan Kalyg.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Michael D. Domenico, student body president this year. With me tonight is our Treasurer and Secretary, Dylan and Ross Kalyg. Dylan and Ross. Our Vice President Hope Akarsik is playing soccer right now, so we hope they win. We're very excited for this new year and all the events our Fox Leadership Council has planned. This year started off strong, we had a great meeting with Dr. Howard to discuss our goals for the FLC leadership. Currently, all of our clubs and activities are working on renewing for the upcoming school year. Last year, we had 75 active clubs. Our Diversity Council will be attending the Eradicate Hate Conference next week. Our Wellness Council has a Wellness Wednesday moment during the morning announcements, as well as posting Shrep's tips on their Instagram. Student Engagement Team is planning our major event, Homecoming, by choosing a dance theme and Spirit Week. Our Community Outreach is having the Food Drive Competition for Second Harvest upcoming this Monday. And we have our first Blood Drive of the season. We earned a $1,250 scholarship for one student who donated every drive. As we look forward to the school year, different clubs and leaders and FLC leaders will be sharing at each Board meeting to keep you updated on our year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Reljack, could you give us your superintendent's report, please?
Sure, for the superintendent's report, I am going to once again call upon High School Program Principal, Dr. Nicole Smith, and she's going to talk about the school's newly implemented Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, or PBIS, program, the FCA Way, which stresses the importance of students being focused, caring, and accountable. So, Dr. Smith, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I am lucky enough tonight to introduce a young man from our student body who created a video for you all, so I'm going to introduce him first and let him show you his video before we talk a little bit about how this came about. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Aiden Drucker.
Good evening, my name is Aiden Drucker, and I'm a junior here at the high school. Over the past week and a half, I have had the opportunity to create a video introducing a new initiative at our school called the FCA Way. Through my work experience program in the Communications Department, I was fortunate to have the opportunity to make this video, which would have never happened without the guidance and support of Jill Leonard and Mr. Ryan Devlin in the video production studio. Through meeting with students, educators, and administrators, I've gotten to see the FCA Way from every perspective. I've seen how positive change can impact every level of a school, both inside and outside the classroom, on most importantly, how it has affected the education and impact of our students. There is a saying, "Don't think of an elephant." The moment you hear that, the first thing that comes to your mind is an elephant. The point is, when we only focus on what not to do, we end up often reinforcing it. The FCA Way is designed to flip that mindset. Rather than waiting for students to make mistakes and then reacting with consequences, the FCA Way proactively recognizes and rewards positive behavior while keeping students accountable for their actions. What makes it even more meaningful is that it was created with input from both teachers and students, so it reflects the values of our school, community, from the people that the program affects the most. As a student, I can already feel the difference. It creates a more positive and supportive environment where doing the right thing is noticed and celebrated. On behalf of students, I want to thank you for your support of the FCA Way. This initiative represents more than a set of rules. It's a step towards building a culture where character and positive choices are encouraged every day. Thank you.
While we're working on that, I will just say that our PBIS programs, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, exist actually in all of our schools. The high school is the last school to implement this year, and it's been a steady stream of that. Every school's looks a little bit different because it's created, and some of the things that are done at the schools are done by a group and a community in the school to make the decisions. And our goal with having that is to instill that culture from K through 12 for what we expect in our schools, and to make what the expectations are overt, so that it's not hidden from anyone, as well as something then that we can celebrate as we see things going. So, we're really pleased, I know that the high school has been working very hard on creating their version of PBIS through the FCA Way. Still no volume, huh?
It's okay, while they work on that, we're definitely going to show the video. But while they work on that, I'll explain a little bit about how we got here. So, you have two things in front of you. You have kind of a handout that explains what PBIS is, goes over the kind of core values, and then the FCA Way matrix, where a group of teachers, about 20 teachers and about five to six students in the spring, did some training. We thought about, you know, the elementary uses respect, responsibility, and integrity as their core behavioral expectations. The middle school moved on to prepared, prompt, productive, and polite, the four Ps. And we really considered whether we wanted to go back to respect, responsibility, and integrity as the students had been familiar with, or whether we wanted to push this forward. I'm a big slogan person, so my parameters for the students and the teachers was it had to be connected to Fox Chapel. So, the FCA Way was born. It took us a very long time to come up with three expectations that started with F-C and A that everybody could agree on, but I think we landed in a really great place because everyone can connect to the behaviors or the habits of being focused, caring, and accountable. And so, through that group of 20 faculty members and five students, the FCA Way was born. We came up with a matrix of what it looks like to be focused, caring, and accountable in different areas of the school, and we tried to be mindful of the difference between high school and elementary school. A lot of times, when people hear PBIS in high school, they'll say, "Well, you know, aren't those kids too old for that?" And the reality is, is that the prefrontal cortex is not fully developed until you're 25. So, they are not in fact too old for it. They do need to be reminded regularly about what, you know, expected behaviors are. And it really does focus, I don't think I could have said it better than Aiden said it. It really flips the narrative, instead of focusing on what students are doing wrong, focusing on what they're doing right and what those expectations are. The other thing that you have in front of you is a pamphlet that we're going to give out at Open House, so you all can pick a different session, or, you know, I know you're going to have your own table. It does have a QR code that has the matrix for all parents, and then talks about being focused, caring, and accountable. There are ways to recognize students from meeting expectations. This month, we're running an initiative on being on time, so focusing on accountability, and students are getting FCA Way points in their QRT if they're here on time, and the grade level with the most points at the end of the month will get a special breakfast. So, those are kind of the things that we're working on right now, and how this came about. It was about four days of training with the AIU with different groups of people. The principals had a training, the core team had a training, and then we worked with what kind of recognition systems and things we wanted to roll out. So, it is just getting started, and it is not necessarily something new, but it is a way to enhance the excellence that's already expected here at the high school, and really frame it in a way where everybody's using the same language and expecting things in that way. The FCA Way, if you will. Now, I do have one complaint about the video before you see it. I said to Aiden, "Can you use AI and make me look like Sandra Bullock?" And he said, "Who is that?" So, I'm going to get over that, and I'm still going to be proud of Aiden for making the video.
Just doesn't seem to want to connect tonight. What we may have to do is celebrate this in another way, or try it, and see if we can figure out how to get it to play with sound. For those of you that are seeing it at home, you may not be able to see it because it's not playing with sound, unfortunately. I'm kind of impressed with the aerial view, though, Aiden, at the beginning, so.
It is a really amazing video. I'll see if I can get my phone to connect, and if I can play it from my phone, I do have it on there, and we'll see if we can do that if you guys want to move on. I'll be sure to interrupt you if we can get it to work.
That'd be great.
Just wave at us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aiden.
Thank you.
Other than talking a little bit about the work that our high school is doing, and really all of our schools are doing with PBIS, I just want to thank everybody for a great start to the school year. We had a successful start to the school year. I know we were delayed a few days at Hartwood, but they also have started. We have seen a lot of smiling faces, a lot of excitement, and I appreciate all of the work that our students, our staff, our families, our educators, our administrators, our custodians, our bus drivers, everybody has done to make this successful start to the school year. People seemed very excited and thrilled to be back, so.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jafrey, is there a solicitor's report?
No report.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Combined Agenda Study Session and Regular Business Meeting from August 11?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or corrections for the minutes? Mrs. Music, will you please call the rolls? Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad. Yes. Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Sitch.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's time for our first public comment period. We do not have anyone signed up, so we will move on to old business. We're now adding committee reports under old business. We will start with Mrs. Cooper with an academic committee report.
Sure, the academic committee will meet on September 9th, which is tomorrow, at 6:00 PM in the lower level of the district administrative offices. The agenda includes an update on high school English, information on the secondary novel vetting and selection process, and discussion about collecting perceptual data. Be there.
All right, I'm looking forward to it.
What is perceptual data?
Survey feedback on opinions about climate or environment.
Like perceptions of.
Those things that you perceive, the data on that. And again, I am glad I'm not the only one that asked that question.
Thank you.
You're now the third, thank you.
Mr. Frank, the Governance Committee report.
Thank you. The Governance Committee met on September 3rd, 2025, to review two Board Operating Guidelines and also 11 district policies. The majority of the recommended changes in policy were recommended by PSBA, and they were due to the interpretation of language. For example, several policy subsections were titled Title IX, Sexual Harassment, and Other Discrimination. These subsections are now titled Discrimination/Harassment. Policy 919 District/School Report Cards was recommended for retirement based on the PDE's development and also issuing of the Future Ready PA Index for measuring school performance. The next Governance Committee meeting will be held on October 7th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Administrative Offices Professional Development Room. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pause us because I think we have sound for our video now.
I do, and this came from a text message that I sent to my dad, so. Not too many people saw that coming. See that, the whole world saw it, my dad called me daddy to the world for no reason.
I didn't even see it.
I wasn't looking.
We didn't see it.
There it is.
Dr. Howard really knocked it out of the park here in this part that you're seeing.
Environment.
There we go.
You made a new job, and you're like, "Please don't help me mess this up." We will gladly email you all this information.
Thank you. We appreciate all the effort to try to get it to work.
It looks like a great video.
Yes. Okay. Projects and Planning Committee report, Ms. Sitch.
Yes, the Projects and Planning Committee meeting will be on September 15th. That's a week from today, tonight, at 6:00 PM in the lower level of the district administrative offices. Though the agenda is still being finalized, it will include an update on district facility projects and their funding, including the new geo bond, the multi-phase capital improvement plan, and how that's being informed by the Cyclone Energy Report we received in last month's meeting. But as ever, all committees are expecting input from the public, and our agendas are shaped by your input, so please reach out.
Thank you. All right, to new business, facilities, and transportation, Mrs. Lynch.
Authorization to Request Proposals, Fox Chapel area high school sports lighting replacement project. Our first item, authorize the administration to request proposals from vendors, approved by government purchasing cooperatives for the Fox Chapel area high school sports lighting replacement project. Authorize the advertisement for bids for the Fox Chapel Area High School Tennis Court Renovations Project. I move on these two items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I think sometimes we forget that we know the story of how this came to be because of the flow between committee and conversations with Dr. Raljack. But for the community, can you contextualize a little bit why we need these new projects?
Sure.
And why alternatives did not come into fruition?
Sure. When, when the board approved the consultant to work with it, we also had talked with that. So, to refresh people's memory, the high school sport lights, in that those are the lights that are in the stadium, are at their end of life. In fact, the light bulbs will only be made for, I think, one or two more years. And there's, one of the poles also had some structural issues, and we took that down. And so, this is the replacement of those stadium lights, that we can have fully functioning, modern lights. They will be LED lights, they will use less energy, and provide a better quality of light. The second one is for the high school tennis court renovations project. The tennis court has developed a crack. It's had a crack for multiple years, but the crack continues to grow, and it's not as simple as just resurfacing this time, because it's been resurfaced so many times, we're going to have to actually replace the whole surface. And so, dig it out and, and do some remedial work underneath, and then resurface the tennis courts. And so, these two are big projects that we have known about for many years, two or three years that these were on the way. They just now are here. And so, they were part of the board's approved budget for the '25-'26 school year, and we are ready to move forward with trying to take the next step for them. The hard part about these two is that they have to be timed for a specific season. The tennis court needs to be in certain temperature to be able to cure, and obviously, you can't use, replace lights in a stadium when it's being used for a lot of athletics, so.
So, our expected timeline for the community to see these projects come to fruition might be generally around...
Well, it certainly will depend on if, what the, you know, what the information is that we get back on the projects. We're tentatively hoping to begin the lighting project in the stadium at the end of October or beginning of November, as soon as the fall sports seasons are over. And the tennis courts would be probably next spring and summer because of the temperature that's necessary to cure them. But we need to line up the vendors and the work bid now, the people that are going to bid on that now, because it's a very time-specific, short season for their workload.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll vote, and then I think the video, we're gonna try one more time. Okay, we're gonna try again. All right. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Howard, principal here at Fox Chapel Area High School. I want to take a moment to introduce you to the FCA Way. The FCA Way is our school-wide initiative designed to take our positive and inclusive environment to the next level. This initiative is built on three core expectations: being focused, caring, and accountable. These values will continue to guide how we learn, how we treat one another, and how we grow as a school community.
The FCA Way serves as the final stage in a coordinated K-12 framework for fostering student growth and development. As educators, we value the knowledge and skills that students accumulate throughout their school experience, but we also are committed to prioritizing the dispositions that our students develop. Dispositions meaning the habits that individuals must draw upon in order to effectively navigate novel, complex, and/or uncertain situations.
The FCA Way has really helped our school feel more positive and welcoming. It keeps things more organized and makes it easier for everyone to know what's expected. Our teachers use it by encouraging good choices, keeping routines clear, and helping us stay on track every day.
Our goal is to encourage and celebrate positive habits. When students show they are focused, caring, and accountable, we want to recognize those choices. This approach builds a stronger, more unified, and more empowering school culture. The FCA Way is connected to school-wide PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, which is a framework that focuses on teaching, modeling, and acknowledging positive student habits, rather than only punishing student mistakes.
My name is Mr. Polnitz, and I'm a teacher in the science department at the high school. I was part of the initial group of educators and students who set out to encourage positive behavior in and around the classroom. Since then, the FCA Way has had a significant impact in my classroom by helping students stay focused on their learning while also supporting their personal growth. The FCA Way has promoted a more positive, integrated classroom culture, and I look forward to seeing its continued impact on our students.
By using the FCA Way, we're solving challenges like inconsistent expectations, wavering student engagement, and unpredictable motivation. But most importantly, we're establishing routines that help students grow into focused, caring, and accountable adults.
So, you've learned that FCA Way is more than just a set of expectations. It is a part of our culture, one that's built on focus, care, and accountability. Together, we will continue to build on the great traditions of our school community and ensure our school is a place where every student cultivates the skills needed for lifelong success. That is the FCA Way.
That was a great video, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time. I really want to make sure you guys see that. We worked really hard on it.
Yeah, you can take it.
Well done.
Good job. Thank you. All right. Mr. Hamilton, could you read the finance report, please?
Yes, under finance, we have six items tonight. Disbursements, general fund disbursements from Fund 10 in the amount of $10,215,631.56. Item two is capital reserve fund disbursements from Fund 31 in the amount of $1,288,964.18. Item three is the finance report, finance report for July 2025 is acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. Item four, new bank account. Approved the establishing a new bank account for the general obligation bond 2025 Fund 33 with the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust effective September 2025. There's no cost to establish this account. Item five, district auditor services. Approved retaining Hosek, Spetsmutz, and Wood, the LLP, to perform agreed-upon additional audit and consulting services at a cost not to exceed $5,000. Item six, Power School Group LLC agreement. E Finance Plus Software. Approved the agreement as attached between Fox Chapel Area School District and Power School Group LLC for E Finance Plus Software for the period January 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2027 at a cost of $65,261.96. This is a renewal of services. I move to approve all six items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper, will you read the instruction report, please?
Yes. All right. The first item I'll be moving on is to ratify the agreement as attached between the school district and Power School Group LLC for SIS hosting, SIS hosting SSL certificate and SIS maintenance and support for the period of August 13, 25 through June 30, 27, 2027 at a cost of $90,555.76. This is a renewal of services. Number two is to ratify the agreement with Power School Group LLC for enrollment registration for the period of August 13, 25 through June 30, 27 at a cost of $42,286.99. Also a renewal. Number three is to ratify the agreement with Power Group, Power School Group LLC for eCollect Forums, SaaS, for the period of August 13, 25 through June 30, 27 at a cost of $4,848.94. Also a renewal. Number four is to ratify an agreement with Power School Group LLC for a Schoology LMS subscription for the period of August 13, 25 through June 30, 27 at a cost of $29,428.49. This is a renewal of services. Number five, also with Power School LLC, for, oh, I couldn't pronounce this word last year either, Naviance Software?
Yes.
Naviance, all right. For the middle school and high school for the period of August 13, 25 through June 30, 27 at a cost of $24,471.12. This is a renewal. Number six is with JA BizTown Contract, Junior Achievement of Western Pennsylvania for fourth grade students to participate in the JA BizTown for the '25-'26 school year at an estimated cost of $9,000. This is a renewal of contracts. Number seven is to approve the agreement with the Audubon Society of Western PA to provide the kindergarten through grade four environmental education program for the '25-'26 school year at a cost of $34,855. This is a renewal of services. Number eight is also with the Audubon Society of Western PA to provide grade five environmental education program for the '25-'26 school year at a cost of $91,850, a renewal of services. Number nine is with Camp Allegheny, Inc., for lodging meals, meeting spaces for the fifth grade environmental education program for the fall of 2026. Dates are to be determined, and this is a renewal of services. I move on those nine items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items?
Our, our Power School, I was just doing some napkin math. Our Power School commitment annually is about a quarter of a million dollars. With the, through, I mean, it's, it's an extraordinary amount of money to one vendor, even though I realize that that vendor represents the consolidation of multiple vendors who formerly were independent.
Some of these are not annual contracts. They're eighteen-month or two-year contracts, so.
Amy just called that, yeah. In that case, I mean, even half that's kind of remarkable, but, yeah. Do we, do we seek alternatives to Power School at the point of renewal, or is it one of those things where there's this sort of organizational inertia associated with adopting those technologies?
No, there are obviously always opportunities to replace your student information system. All student information systems have various additional add-ons, depending on what your needs are. Power School has been this district's student information system for a while. There are only a few that exist, and, and at this point in time, we're very pleased with them. They seem to have done with, with what we can do in the system. We've had other things that we aren't pleased with, but at the same time, we're not necessarily looking to replace the student information system based on the user's feedback at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to highlight our continued investment in, I think, some of the best programs we have at the elementary level, the BizTown and the Audubon, K through five, culminating with the Camp Allegheny Experience. It's something that I think we just should be really proud of as a board and as a community for supporting that. Increasingly, as I talk to friends and family in other districts, these things are being cut because they just don't make the cut when it's budget time. So, I think it's something that we should feel really proud of investing in.
Excellent point. I agree.
Agreed, yeah, yeah.
Any other comments? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Frank, legislation and policy.
No action is requested tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zich, personnel.
Yes, I'm moving on the following items. Item one, resignations. Administration, the resignation of Jonathan T. Nahaus, principal at Dorseyville Middle School due to retirement is effective July 1st, 2026. Supplemental contracts athletic, the resignation of Kelly Elaine Gibson, basketball girls, high school JV head due to personal reasons. The resignation of Anthony Atri, baseball middle school due to personal reasons. Resignation of Isabella Legazi, Regazi, field hockey, middle school, due to personal reasons. For supplemental contracts non-athletic, the resignation of Adam E. Danielson, bus monitor number three, Elementary O'Hara, due to personal reasons. The resignation of Carly L. Hackett, overnight camp counselor due to personal reasons. Item number two, appointment. School police officer Scott K. Slagle is approved pending court approval as a school police officer for the Fox Chapel Area School District, effective date to be determined. For educational support, Megan G. Snee is approved as a personal care assistant at Hartwood Elementary School, effective September 15. Lori S. Tavella is approved as an instructional assistant at O'Hara Elementary School. Supplemental contracts athletic, the following athletic contracts are ratified. Ian Ablyn, Ablynalp, excuse me, wrestling, middle school head. Bailey Bonnet, swimming, high school head. Dominica Delaney, basketball girls, high school JV head. Kelly Elaine Gibson, basketball girls, high school first assistant. Michael Howard, five football girls, high school first assistant. Jason Jablon, basketball girls, program development assistant. Shay McCaffrey, failed hockey, middle school assistant, 30%. And Deborah Welty, five football girls, high school second assistant. For supplemental contracts non-athletic, the non-athletic supplemental contracts for '25-'26 school year are ratified and approved as attached. Item number three, professional leave. Jacqueline J. Garcia, school nurse at O'Hara Elementary School, is approved for child-rearing adoption leave. For leave replacements professional, Kelly M. Burisma is ratified as a first semester leave replacement math teacher at Fox Chapel Area High School due to the educational sabbatical of Melissa Oberst. Zachary M. Lemansky is ratified as a one-year leave replacement math teacher at Fox Chapel Area High School due to the child-rearing adoption leave of Kayla Derry. Emma M. Stankovic is ratified as a one-year leave replacement elementary teacher at Hartwood Elementary School due to increased enrollment. Item number five, change of status, educational support. Kara L. Katara, Katara, excuse me, personal care assistant at Hartwood Elementary School is ratified as instructional assistant at Dorseyville Middle School. Diana R. Coon, ten-month building secretary at Fox Chapel Area High School, is ratified as a twelve-month building secretary at Fox Chapel Area High School. And Autumn L. Williams, personal care assistant at Hartwood Elementary School, is ratified as an instructional assistant at Kerr Elementary School. Item six, employment agreement. The following employment agreement is approved as presented effective date depending upon release from her current employment duties for school psychologist Miranda N. Swartz. Item seven, salary crossover. We will be ratifying the crossovers on the salary scale for the professional employees listed below for the '25-'26 school term based on verification of additional credits earned. That's Brian Branker, Joshua, Dickinson, Amelia, Katonka, Bailey, Metter, Rachel, excuse me, Norman, Lindsay, Plans, Tracy, Pellnitz, Alexander, Puntile, Julia, and Steen, Anna. Item eight, effective date correction. Joshua, Dee, Mariana, previously approved with an effective date, September 5th, is ratified for an effective date August 13th of this year. Item nine, volunteer athletic. The following athletic volunteer is ratified, Kimberly Echol, cross-country high school. I move on these nine items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the personnel?
For one-year leave replacements, those are typically filled with educators we view as sort of the same level or experience as any of our other positions. Is that correct?
There, the, anybody that goes through and is recommended as a leave replacement has gone through the whole interview process, and that, that the site team has recommended as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Good, will you please read operations and cooperative services?
Yes, number one, Omnigo Software LLC agreement. Ratify the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel Area School District and Omnigo Software LLC to provide a records management system to the district school police officers effective June 15th, 2025 through June 14th, 2026 at a cost of $10,175.22. This is a renewal of services. Number two, Mobile Communications Service, Inc., Mobile Comm agreements. Approved the agreements as presented between the Fox Chapel Area School District and Mobile Comm for the purchase and installation of safety and security equipment effective September 8th, 2025 at a cost of $13,925. These are new agreements. I move on those two items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
The Omnigo software agreement, that software does not integrate with our existing Power School management system. Is that correct?
Correct, it is separated.
Perfect, thank you.
Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Frank, will you read letter G for us?
Yes, I would like to move that we approve the slate of candidates for the PSBA 2026 officer elections and authorize the board secretary to electronically cast a vote on behalf of the board of school directors. PSBA leadership positions are President-elect Holly Arnold from the Toncanic Area School District; for Vice President, Matt Vanoy from Sharon City School District; for Western Zone representative, it's a two-year term. We have to choose one, Eric Meredith or Antonio Paris. So I'll delete, I'll delete that from the motion and then we'll, we'll come back to that one. PSBA insurance treasurers, three-year term, we have to choose two, and Roberta M. Marcus and Kathy K. Swope are the only two candidates for those two positions. So I'll move for everyone except for the Western Zone representative.
Oh, you'll move on all of them?
I'll move for all of them except for that.
Second.
Yes.
Thank you. Would anyone like to discuss any of this?
I'm excited to see a contested race for PSBA leadership. I think that represents a stronger representative democracy.
Yes. Okay, all right. All right, shall we vote on the motion?
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I would like to put forward Antonio Paris as the candidate for the Western Zone representative.
For sake of discussion, I'll second that.
Thank you. I don't know if any of you were able to watch the videos that we were sent by PSBA for the two candidates. And in my opinion, I felt this Antonio Paris was the stronger candidate. And he's also right across the river from us in Riverview. Does, I don't know if anyone else was able to watch the videos, has anything they would like to add on these candidates?
I'll say that I know that Antonio Paris has served in good standing with his district and is well-respected by many members of his community.
Okay, thank you. Good to know.
There was also some text available as well that I did review that, so, yeah. And in my opinion, that's, that sounds like a fine choice.
Okay.
I read the written documents, or the written, slate, they said. Yes, breakdowns, yes, thank you. And I thought he was a good candidate.
Yep.
I agree.
All right, so we should vote on him?
Well, did he, you were just talking about it, did anybody move?
You need to make a motion.
I need a motion, and Mr. Frank seconded it.
Yep.
So shall we vote on the motion, Mrs.?
So this is to vote for Antonio Paris?
Correct.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It is time for our second public comment period, and I assume no one's on it? Nope, okay, thank you. Fox Chapel Educators Association, Mrs. Mackin.
Fast meeting tonight. Good evening. We just wanted to take a moment to express our thanks to the members of the school board and district office that gave your time to help the teachers at Hartwood get ready to open the building. They were extremely appreciative of all of your efforts, so thank you. And the year is off to a great start. Have a good night.
Thank you. Board comments, Mr. Frank?
It was a busy summer for the administration and the board and various citizen advisory groups who worked with, with the board advising on financing, bond resources, building and grounds issues, and other areas that are essential to the district. Their expertise is a big key to our success because the members of these groups are experts in their fields. As members of our community, they also have the district's best interest in mind. We thank the members of those groups. There were multiple public school authority meetings detailing how many of the facilities have immediate needs, and just two examples are the electrical system at Fairview, which is 75 years old, and that the boilers and chillers at several of our buildings are well past their useful lifespan and repair parts are unavailable. Additionally, there were public meetings presented by the National Cyclone Energy Engineering Group evaluating the condition, immediate needs, and potential costs that could impact four of our older buildings. Their detailed 61-page report is quite interesting and alarming. These meetings were all open to the public and open for questions. The public discussion on multiple occasions and the recommendations of the resource advisory, who are financial experts from our community on how to best fund immediate building needs in this advantageous bond market with our AA+ rating, were informative. Board members both past and present take great part in our schools and our students and staff, realizing we always have areas to improve. We recognize that partnering with parents and residents and seeking expert opinions will always make our district stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Finley?
Welcome back to school, everyone. Please make sure to wash your hands. My kids have already been home three days, one with stomach bugs and then some sort of virus, so stay clean. Lots of hand sanitizer, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Lynch?
I just wanted to say it was a pleasure to work with the Hartwood teachers and have the opportunity to come alongside them as they started their year in unexpected way. And we were happy to do that and to be there with them. I will say that I'm hopeful that as we move forward with all of the capital funding conversations that we've been having, that we start to sort of consider this capital building conversation as a more integrated part of our budget. And really plan for it being that. I think we have six buildings that are gonna continuously need repair forever. And I think it would be smart of us to consider this a more continuous process. And so I'm just gonna encourage that we view it that way and that we plan for it that way.
Thank you. Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes, I too appreciated the opportunity to help out a little bit at Hartwood. It felt like a drop in the bucket, though, when you saw the scope of work that was happening there. And I was really impressed at how positive the vibe was there despite a lot of stuff going on that would easily frustrate most people. Also, I'm still awestruck over Ulliana's accomplishment. I just am amazed. Every time I hear our, our student accomplishments, it's like, oh, and another one's doing this, another one's doing that. So, so again, congratulations to her and her family and, and all of the folks behind the scenes who I'm sure had an instrumental role in helping her get where she is today.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
Last we got the opportunity to attend the Kerr PTO night, activity night, and that was a great opportunity, and I was really thankful for all the parents who came and who helped organize that activity. And I also wanted to, I was reflecting after the comments about Camp Allegheny, that it was 20 years ago that my daughter first attended Camp, my oldest daughter first attended Camp Allegheny, and what an amazing experience that was. And then that my other two daughters, the younger daughters, went through it as well, and they still to this day have conversations about what they did or their, their experience. It's their shared common identifier of their experience. And one of their key experiences at Fox Chapel schools, and I know that's true for a lot of kids, that that was definitely, is a memorable tradition and as well as an educational experience. And I'm sure many others have had parent-child, because it's been going on for quite a long time, and it's still a very valuable experience. I'm glad that generations of school boards will continue to support it and fund it and that the teachers continue to support it and attend, because I know that three days can be a challenge with a lot of kids away from home, some of them for the first time. So thank you to everybody who makes that possible.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper?
No comment.
Ms. Zitch?
I'll just echo how impressed I am at our Coolidge scholar. It's really extraordinary. She absolutely deserves that honor, and it's exceptional to have a scholar in our district of that caliber. I would say to the teachers at Hartwood showed an incredible amount of resilience and enthusiasm. It's a hard thing to look a school year in the eye with less than 24 hours in your classroom, and they were not just there getting it done, they were there getting it done, and they were relishing in it. They were absolutely thrilled. And every family member I spoke to entered Hartwood on that Tuesday spoke of an outstanding, successful opening, so congratulations. I will also encourage everyone to lean on any state representative or senator you know. The 70-days overdue budget is inexcusable and unprofessional, and it affects every district and public school entity and public entity you interact with in the state of Pennsylvania.